Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A, Purpose Three, to consider strategy with respect to negotiations with the fire union. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A, Purpose Six, to consider the purchase, lease, sale or value of real estate in relation to properties in the vicinity of Town Hall and South Street and parcels owned by Yumina off Chestnut Street because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, approval of executive session minutes, and to allow Norman Camallo and Elaine Lazarus to participate in the executive session, to then convene an open session at the conclusion of executive session.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
And by roll call vote, Shahadul?
Um, Shadman, yes.
Miral Kramer?
Yes. Miral Kramer, yes. Okay. We'll be back after executive session at six thirty. I'm sorry.
Welcome back. We'll call the open session to order and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So our first order of business is always public forum. Residents are reminded that everybody gets two minutes to speak publicly. When you come up, please introduce yourself, your name, your address, and then take your two minutes to tell us what's on your mind. Can I have a show of hands of who here is here for public comment? Three? Okay, so why don't we start with the first person? Mr. Santola, do you want to go first? Again, we have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Joe Santola, 113 Winter Street in Hopkinton. And I wanted to express concerns with a permit which was issued, special permit to keep bikes up at 166 Winter Street. The bikes are in the town property. They have been for some time. Started at the point of the cease and desist and continued to the ZBA hearings. He was granted this special permit and the bikes are still there. And at some point in time, I hate to say it, but you know, it's a busy intersection. There's twists and winds. Somebody's going to get hurt and, you know, the town will be liable. And I think that, in fact, the applicant should have prepared a site plan and demonstrated at the hearing where the bikes would be staged off the townway property. The town property up there needs to be surveyed and defined by bounds by the applicant of the town and the bikes should be kept off the private way and six feet away from the pavement or more, which ZBA allowed. Bikes have been in violation since the cease and desist order again. And they're still there in the right way. They get moved back and forth as a canoe out there that was not permitted.
Okay, that's been a little bit more than two minutes, sir.
The town has instructed the applicant to remove the bikes off the town property several times and he ignores their requests.
Santola, you do need to wrap up, please.
I will continue.
You'll have to stop. It's been more than two minutes. That's what everybody gets.
If you can continue. There's got to be some enforcement. He's got to put, he should put up a split rail fence so he knows where he can have his bikes and display them and not.
So, thank you very much, sir. And we can continue our conversation offline.
I'm halfway through my list.
No, sir. I apologize. But everybody gets the same amount of time.
Is this a gag order, two minutes said?
No, everybody gets the same amount of time. I apologize that you're upset about it, but it's what everybody gets, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate your comment.
I'll leave my list.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Jim, were you, did you raise your hand? Are you next?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, come on forward. Again, two minutes, please, as best you can.
Hi. I've spoken a couple of things in the past. I want to just focus on one thing tonight, which is the hearing or the process that's been going on. I'm trying to resolve is to ban the Upper Charles Trail. My primary interest in all this is that this be a clear, proper, fair review of all the facts so that the select board can consider all the information and the facts that's out there about the progress, the accomplishments of the Upper Charles Trail Committee. I think all that's been lost. I've heard nothing on social, well, I don't go to social media. But I've heard no discussion of what the Upper Charles Trail Committee has actually accomplished, which is tremendous, in my opinion, only about this assault because of Hayden Row. I've written some things. I just want to say that there needs to be, I'm going to renew my objections to the proceedings as they are now, and there needs to be a public hearing, a public meeting, a separate meeting, something. This is not the right forum because it's, in my mind, it's several hours. You don't have time for that here.
No.
And I know you're all tired from it too. But, you know, I'm kind of shocked at how this whole thing has come about. I hope that we can have some kind of a joint meeting, some kind of a real joint meeting, not former members of the Upper Charles Trail Committee get to go to attend a TCMC meeting or a select board meeting, but a real meeting. So, in that regard, I would ask that the select board consider and unsuspend, reinstate the members of the Upper Charles Trail Committee so the members can meet and put information together to present at such a meeting. I also request that you stop the madness that is the TCMC writing new charge or new charges for committees that haven't even been decided to be formed yet.
It is.
So it seems to me like it's a colossal waste of time. I can't read it because I want to bomb it. Just, I think that I would, I would hope.
You had me at the first reason.
Reinstate the Upper Charles Trail Committee so its members can meet and discuss things.
Thanks, Jim.
And stop the drafting. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Your address? What's your address?
Oh, 35 Wood Street.
Thanks, Jim.
Hey, look, I almost forgot.
Amanda?
Amanda Maffey, 21 Hayden Row Street. And I just want to remind the select board that the town voted 72 to 28%, you know, to start over again. Not start over again, but to, you know, disband a committee. It was not between the TCMC and the UCTC. People have made it into that. The town voted. The town voted. And this board is a servant of the town. So it seems pretty clear. And it's been hooped up into this big, you know, emotional thing that it's really not. The town voted to have a new committee take over the Upper Charles Trail. And that's pretty simple. So I'm asking the select board to honor that. You know, because there wasn't any big thing that went out to try to get people to come out. People came out of their own volition, voted 78 to 28%. In the school, what I understand was it was 55 to 45 when they had the place doesn't happen on Fruit Street or not. And when they took it to a town vote, it was 70s to 30s. So if you use the logic, if you take 70 to 30 and then you say, okay, let's take it to a town vote, it's most likely going to go up. It's not going to go down. Okay, so let's just do the simple thing of disbanding this one and starting with a new group. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, and we have one more? Welcome. So the process is to just introduce yourself and your address and then you have a couple of minutes. We're glad you're here.
Just here for moral support.
I like it. Have a seat.
Incoming intern. It's great to see young people wanting to get involved in politics and public service.
My name is Aubrey Thomas. I live at 215 Pond Street and I am a junior at Hopkinton High School. I am very interested in studying civics and government when I go to college. I was in a human geography class this year and we had a discussion about our town's flag. When I saw it, I thought that there could be an opportunity to create a design that is more representative of our community. I also noticed that our town's flag is not on display in front of Town Hall or the Town Common or in this room. The only place I could find it is at the Massachusetts State House. My goal is to receive your blessing for me to run a program where we invite members of the community to submit a design for a new town flag. I would convene a community that included one member of the select board, one member of the cultural council, and anyone else you think should be involved. And then we will select the winner. The winning design will be made into the flag that I would like to see displayed in this room in front of Town Hall, on the common, and anywhere else you think it might be appropriate. We would also formally present it to the Massachusetts State House through our elected representatives. I discussed this project with State Representative James Arina De Rosa and I received his support. It would be an honor for me to have your permission to lead this project on behalf of the town. Thank you for your consideration and I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks so much. Aubrey?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, beautiful job and thanks for coming. It's not easy to come into a room filled with people and do something that you're not typically accustomed. It's not even, it's not easy for adults to do either. If you've been watching, it can be challenging. So the process also here is that you introduce your idea, but we don't usually engage with it because we'd need to put it on the agenda. But I would enthusiastically support putting it on a future agenda and giving it the consideration it deserves.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ed, do you have public comment? Name and address, please.
Ed Harrow, Eight Spring Lane, Chair of Open Space. And I just, first I want to thank you all for allowing me to address you before you started your executive session. And secondly, I want to talk about communication. So for instance, on your agenda tonight is two articles or two pieces about accepting gifts of land. One of these I know is Turkey Ridge because it says Turkey Ridge and was given to us in a rather, what I consider, a surprise at town meeting. And I believe in my heart of hearts that when this board is taking an action that involves open space, one way or another, that we should be advised that it's on the agenda so that we can potentially comment or render our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody on Zoom then? Amy on Zoom? Amy's on Zoom. Okay. Hey, Amy. Great. Okay. So our next order of business is the special temporary alcohol license applications for the Hopkins Center for the Arts. So we'll be considering approving two special temporary alcohol licenses for August 26 with a reigning date of the 27th for a play, pint, and pie festival. And the second will be for August 18th for an indoor concert being held at the Center for the Arts. Does the board have any questions?
Went through the material. I don't have any questions. Seems all pretty much in line with what we need and there were no additional comments from any of the finalists. So I'll call for it.
Great.
Joe?
No, I have none. Everything is in order and all the departments have basically signed off so am I.
Same thing. The, you know, Hopkins Center for the Arts has been doing this for a while. They have their act together. Perimeter team seems to all be in agreement, so.
Great. Amy, any questions?
Yeah, I agree. The application was great. No questions.
Okay. I agree. And this is the benefit of an applicant who has been consistently easy to work with and compliant and it's gone well all along. So I will entertain a motion.
I move, Madam Chair, I move to approve special temporary alcohol licenses for the Hopkins Center for the Arts at 98 Hayden Row for events on August 26, 2023, reigning date August 27 and August 18, 2023, as submitted.
Second.
And by roll call vote, this is Mayor Joe?
Bureau film for you, yes.
The finest rule, yes.
Chairman, yes.
Amy?
Amy, number of yes?
Bureau Kramer, yes. Okay. So then I'll turn it over to the town manager and HR for the appointment of a new town.
Yes, through the chair, I'd like to invite Maria and Punam as well as Liz Rook. I am respectfully requesting the select board confirm the town manager's appointment of Punam, Ritz St. Hani.
Yes.
Say that three more times first, Mr. Coleman.
Say it for us.
Hold up one second. I'm going to have to pronounce it.
Yes.
Ritz St. Hani.
Ritz St. Hani. Okay.
Exactly. Ritz St. Han.
Yeah.
Okay. Respectfully requesting the select board confirm the town manager's appointment of Punam as the town's next Assistant Town Accountant. As you know, the Assistant Town Accountant supports the Senior Accounting Manager, Town Accountant, with the day-to-day municipal accounting functions of all town departments, including planning, directing, coordinating, and maintaining all related financial records through posting to the general ledger. This is a position that we have had in place for a while now and Punam will be replacing Stephanie. Position is budgeted. And at this point, with your permission, I would let Maria explain to the community the process and why Punam is our recommended candidate.
Yes, thank you. So Punam, along with other applicants, went through our typical recruitment with the first round panel, a screening, and met with Liz Roth, the Senior Accounting Manager, Elaine Lazarus, Assistant Town Manager, Beryl Wagner, Procurement and Grants Manager, Jessica Leverance, Benefits Administrator, and Chris McMerrill, HR Generalist.
Okay. So does any member of the board have some questions?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Welcome. I've gone through your resume. It looks like you're very accomplished and have been working as an accountant. I just ask, why do you choose Hopkinton?
So I'm very familiar with Hopkinton. Friends here. We've, you know, we come around to Hopkinton State Park, the Great Marathon. So when I looked at the job application, I, you know, it was very close to what I do and I was looking to move from H&R Block because I wanted full-time employment, one, but also, you know, this status I do, wanted to be part of a community. I volunteered at several places. I enjoy also being part of the community. So that was the biggest pull for me.
Slide. Thank you.
Mayor Joe?
Well, I read the resume and it seems to be a very good fit for the office. And I just am very glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Same here. Thank you for choosing Hopkinton and great resume. Welcome to Hopkinton and welcome on board. There's tons of work, as we'll see soon. We'll need a lot of help. So good to have you here.
Thank you.
Amy?
Yeah, I looked through the packet and it was great. And so I just want to say welcome and we'll definitely have you on board before the digestives begins right now for this day of purchasing for the things that we passed at last time meeting. So we're definitely happy to have this session built up.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Very happy to have you here. It's a great team that you're joining and we're really delighted. I appreciate the assertive process that the HR department puts our applicants through and their processes. I have great confidence in that process and that system and we welcome you. I guess if I had the quickest question, I hate to put people on, he stole my question. That's the problem. And I knew he was going to do it. Tell me, tell me what your, and tell me what your sort of interim goals are. What excites you or interests you or what is it you're really looking forward to being able to accomplish in this new role at Hopkinton?
So initially, I'd like to learn all the systems, you know, get better at it. And then I see myself, you know, being so good at it. then I see myself, you know, being so good at it that I'm able to maybe, you know, train or show other people what to do, and, you know, always keep learning and get better and better at it.
Well, congratulations. We're happy to have you, so I will.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to confirm the town manager's appointment of Punam Ritin Hani as Assistant Town Accountant.
Second.
And by roll call vote, Mayor Joe?
Mayor Joe, for you, yes.
The final approval, yes.
Mayor Manon, yes.
Amy?
Amy Ritter Bush?
Mayor Kramer, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, in fact, we, on the agenda, we also have a police officer. I'm thinking, we take a picture together with him?
Great.
Yes.
Don't leave.
Don't leave.
Please don't leave. Don't leave, please.
Police officer. Madam Chair, good evening. So I'm here to celebrate the onboarding of a new police officer. Noah Buantello is a fifth-generation Hopkin family member. Some of his family you may recognize in the back, and he's all in the police academy. He's with a start date of, finish date of September 15th. So he went through the bachelor's program at Fitchburg State, and then went right into the police academy. We've had much success in recruiting out of that program, and I'm happy to introduce him to you.
So tell us, tell us a little bit about the process of finding a candidate like this. I know you didn't have to look very far, because Noah grew up here. I met Noah when he was an infant, but I'll save that whole story.
I'm sure he appreciates it.
Yeah.
So we're constantly recruiting. Sergeant Van Rollen leads a recruitment team. They actually went to Fitchburg State and went to a job fair, and also members from the best, we found the best recruitment tool is our members. Our members bringing people to us from their either past organizations or from the, from the program. In fact, there's a member in the queue right now that we're working backgrounds on that Noah has referred, referred to us in the same program.
Bonus points.
So we, you know, we, our process is, I always start with a resume review, first round interview. Now, it was conducted with, excuse me, Sergeant Van Rollen, Kristen, and Matt Santoro, who's our School Resource Officer. Followed up with Jessica and I interviewing Noah, and the final decision. Then he goes, then they go into an extensive background, beer face, and then that brings us to tonight.
The favorite event. So Noah, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to work in your own town.
All right. So like Chief Bennett was saying, fifth generation from the town, grew up, grew up here, went through the school system here. You know, I feel a deep connection to the town. I mean, it's a place that I've always called home, and, you know, I feel like it's given me, I mean, it's given me this opportunity to work for the police department. It gave me the opportunity to further my education, so I feel like the best way that I could give back to the town is to serve it in its residence.
Shadul, do you have any questions?
No questions. Just looking at your resume, you have great background and raising your experience through internships and various other positions. I see that. I like that a lot. And you have great GPA, so good luck with your masters.
Thanks.
Also, you have, you're born and raised here, so you know the community, you know how and what our town is about, so can't think of a better candidate than you. So looking forward to having you onboard. Thank you, sir.
For fun.
So, you know, a recommendation from Chief Bennett actually goes a long, long way with me, and I think looking at your background and everything that you've done leading up to this point is very, very impressive. Seems like you've been very interested in, in security for quite a while, and yeah, it sounds like a great fit. One thing I would ask would be, in your role as a police officer, your approach towards de-escalating situations?
All right. So in the academy, they, they always enforce de-escalation. In fact, we just had a mental, mental illness class where we saw examples of, you know, police interactions where someone was having, someone was in crisis, and the officers, instead of trying to de-escalate, they immediately went hands-on. And personally, I think, I mean, people just, people just, people want to talk to people, you know? You don't have to go hands-on with them. You can get down to their level and, you know, just have a conversation with someone. That's kind of my outlook on that.
That's great. I, I agree wholeheartedly.
Mayor Joe?
Well, I guess all I want to say is welcome home. We're very glad to have you, and I, your resume is excellent, and it will be starting somewhere after the 15th of September.
Yes, ma'am.
So keep up the good work until then.
All the way through first base and then beyond. Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, it looks great. You just finished your bachelor's and we're gonna elevate your master next year, so that looks great, and that you've got an internship in one of certain things department. You've directed analysis on the use of force. So I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit, like, what you learned from that experience? It seems like a great opportunity.
Yeah, so they just had, they had me do their, just data analysis of their use of force reports for 2021 and 2022. So I got a lot of in-depth experience, I mean, it was mostly just, you know, looking through spreadsheets and stuff, but I got experience with the administrative side of policing. You know, it's not always, you're not always on the street, so, I mean, most of my time spent at Lemonster was in administrative capacity, so, I mean, that's mostly what I learned from that. And I actually, not to pat myself on the back, but I created a template for them to do their use of force reports from now on, and the, my lieutenant was, I mean, he gave me, he commended me for that, so.
We call that sustainability. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a little great. And it's like, I love spreadsheets. I'm about to call them.
I can't say I love spreadsheets, but any, any experience is good experience.
I just want to add that never be afraid of patting yourself on the back. That's what you're supposed to be doing here.
Okay, I am ready for a motion.
Mayor Joe?
Go ahead, Mayor Joe.
Shadul can make him.
Oh, go ahead, Shadul.
You can make a motion.
Do we do conditionally?
Yes, because he hasn't graduated yet. I think that conditionally is just because you haven't graduated yet? Is that why the wording is that way?
So he'll become a member of the team as a, an academy employee, and then once he comes out, he'll become a, yeah, full police officer and upon graduation.
I move to conditionally offer Noah Buantello a position as a police officer for the town of Hopkin, subject to the successful completion of the academy training. Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by roll call vote. Shadul?
Mayor Joe, for you, yes.
The final approval, yes.
Amy?
Amy Ritter Bush?
Mayor Kramer, yes. Congratulations. We're happy to have you.
And if I could just, I would, I'd be remiss to not thank the Human Resource Department and Director Casey's team. We're working daily on different projects with them, and a lot of work goes in, they put a lot of work in to bring Noah forward tonight. Just want to say thank you, and thank you to you.
We're gonna do a big group photo. Mom, Dad, come on.
You're in the middle.
Yeah, Mom and Dad in the middle. Come on, here we go. You guys got all the brothers and sisters. Thank you. Geez, oh, we're done. Do you know his password? Then we'll get the phone. HPD, you want to get in there? Come on. Somebody said, somebody said that. You want to listen to it? All of us?
We got a couple more coming in.
There we go. His family's joining us.
Three generations right here.
Come on.
Time to get back to work.
Norman first. All right. Sure we got everyone? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Thank you. So we have one of those in here. Punky, can we have your board, or board, whoever's here? Yep. And how about? It's a joint session, so when you're settled, Punky, I think you have to open your board. See me?
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Are we waiting for anybody else?
No, this is.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
So go ahead and open your board.
I'd like to open up, I'd like to open the meeting of the Hopkin Housing Authority at 7:05.
Right. So the purpose of this meeting is to hold a joint meeting with the Housing Authority Board to fill a vacancy on the Housing Authority Board, with the term expiring at the 2024 Annual Town Election. Is this, is this, is this term going to end on the 24th, 24th anyway?
Looks like so.
2024? Okay. Okay. All right. So typically, we ask, we like to, if it's okay, I'll lead the, the process, if that's okay. And then what we like to do on the select board is to make sure we ask each of the applicants if they're here the same questions, to give everybody the same opportunity to answer questions. So we have two applicants. Are both applicants here or on Zoom? This lady, want to bring a chair up and just, or actually, bring this up here? Thank you. We have another applicant, is that right? Amit Tanden, is he on Zoom? I think he's right here, and, okay. Okay. So what we typically do, I'm gonna ask the applicant who is here to go ahead and introduce herself, name, address, and a little bit about why you want to serve on the board, and then we'll go around and see if any board members have questions. Amy Ritter Bush is on Zoom, so we'll make sure we go to her as well. So go ahead.
My name is Beth Ann Malloy. I live at 190 Lumber Street. I've lived in Hopkin for 28, 29 years. I worked at the Rest Fit Center. I've been working at the Rest Fit Center now for about 13 years. Prior to that, I worked intensive special needs in the Hopkin School System as a sub and a long-term sub. My kids grew up here. I did tons of volunteering as my children were growing up, and continued even after I was on the Affordable Housing Fund Committee for several years. I'm presently one of our three constables in town, and saw this opening and thought it might be a nice.
Great. So I'll start, I'll just start, Mayor Joe, with you, and we'll come around the circle.
Well, I know Beth, and I, my feelings are that you're an excellent candidate for this position. I think that she's personable, and that you would get along well with the rest of the board and the seniors, and we've known you since you ran for constable, constable. And I, I feel very highly that you're a very good candidate for this position.
Thank you, Mayor Joe.
So what interests you specifically about the Housing Authority Board?
Well, I've always been interested in the seniors in our town. I started a program with the Cub Scouts to sort of intermingle some of our younger families with elderly in our town through the senior center. I have a pretty good background, and I'm pretty easy to get along with, I think, I hope, and I, I think this would be an interesting position for me.
Great, thank you. Shadul?
Chair, thank you for your interest in stepping up, as you have in the past, and thanks for your contribution in other town committees and other town entities as well. And obviously, you have an impressive background. Along the same line, what is your passion about affordable housing? What would you like to add to the vision and?
For affordable housing?
Right.
My dream would be, if you're gonna get rid of Elmwood School, make that an affordable housing area, because it's close to the main street, it's close to the highway, and I think having two dead schools in our town would be a really sad thing, and that would be a great place for that to go.
And how do you add that vision or add your vision to the Housing Authority Board as you know it?
Well, I guess, I think everybody deserves a nice place to live, and having grown up with eight people in a three-bedroom apartment in Cambridge in one of those triple deckers, I know what it's like to have to scrape, scrape together things, and so my passion is to see that families and the elderly get placed where they need to.
Thank you.
Lana?
I don't have any questions, but I'm just excited to have someone else that's new with me to learn and grow, and, because I'm also very new and still learning how to contribute, and I'm excited to have someone else join us.
Go ahead.
Hi, Joe Tobin.
Hi, Joe.
Welcome. Your credentials sound sterling. I wish I had as much time in town as you, and you obviously know the ropes, so I wish you the very best.
Thank you. Punky?
I'm Nancy, our Chair of the Housing Authority Board, and I met last year Beth, and while we were all running for different positions in the town, and I was really impressed in, in how involved she was in the community, and then I found out that she worked for the Rest Fit Center. Right, and my good friend Jenny absolutely adores her, and she just speaks about her very highly. And then this past year, maybe the past few months or so, Beth has actually come to a a few of our meetings at the Housing Authority, and that was impressive, to show that she was really interested in how we ran, and, you know, she actually got to meet some of the seniors, and I feel that she would be a great fit in our board. We'd all work together as a team to make sure that the seniors got the best living conditions that we can, you know, give them, and I think Beth is like the best candidate for, for this position. I'd be very happy to have her with us.
Thanks, Funky. Amy?
Yeah, I don't particularly have any questions. I think Beth is a good candidate for this position, because she's previously been on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and she's already attended some meetings, so I think it's a really good fit. And I don't think Amit is here tonight, but I didn't know, didn't mind know that we have other board openings, and looking at Amit's resume, I think Personnel Committee could possibly be a good fit, so I hope we can appoint Amit to something else, whatever.
Great. I just want to say.
No, I just wanted to comment that I was out Sunday morning, and a lot of, quite a few seniors, there were four seniors sitting next to me, and the first thing they said to me was, can we convert Elmwood School into more senior housing, local senior housing? And I said, well, I certainly will bring it up, and you brought it up tonight, so there you go.
I just wanted to say that, I want to echo Amy. Amy, you're so good about remembering to do that when we find ourselves in a position where we have two people for one, for one slot, and there are lots of open slots, and so we really want to make it possible for people to feel welcome, and, and definitely look around for other positions, because we'd like to fill them, and we'd like to give people who are interested in the opportunity to, to fill those positions. I think for me, you're uniquely qualified for this, because you're such a fierce advocate, unapologetically for folks that really need and deserve incredible advocacy, and so I really appreciate that a lot, the folks at the Respite Center, the kids you served when you were in the schools, and the seniors that, I know you already served, right, even before formally being part of a board or committee, so I really appreciate, appreciate that. So typically, we go around and just ask when there's two people, but I, I wonder if we could just take a motion, because usually it really is important to come, because it's very hard to compare candidates that are here and candidates that are not here. Are people comfortable nominating Beth? I think that's the rhythm I'm getting.
Yes.
So would you like to make that motion, Shadu?
I move a motion to select Beth Malloy to the position of Housing Authority Board Member, to a term expiring at the 2024 Annual Town Election.
By roll call vote, I'll start here again and come around, Mary Jo? Mary Jo, for me?
Yes.
Herrmann, yes.
I'm gonna go ahead. Muriel Kramer, yes?
Herrmann, yes.
Bellamy, yes, yes.
Joe Tobin, yes.
Nancy Dora, yes.
And Amy. Any other questions? Congratulations, Beth.
Thank you.
And I just want to echo what Andy had said about Amit. He seemed like a very qualified candidate, and invite him to join other boards that we could appoint him to.
Okay, yes, and almost, I think that maybe we should make sure we send to people the openings, if they are appointed, is that something we can just routinely do?
Yes, we can.
You know what I mean? Just so that they know what other openings are available, and, yeah, or, I'm making a comment. Okay. Do we have folks in the room who are here for annual appointments for, oh, do you have to? Yeah, go ahead and close your meeting, I'm sorry.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Oh, two seconds.
So moved? 7:15, adjourned.
Okay. Okay. Do we have folks in the room who are here for appointments to the Board of Appeals or Cultural Council? Can you just raise your hand if you are? In that case, are we able to go to our legislative update and do the appointments? A little while?
If, through the chair, if the individuals who are here for those appointments are participating remotely, could they simply, yeah, could they simply?
No, we do not.
Okay, so go ahead with the legislative update.
All right, so we are pleased tonight to have a legislative update from Representative James Arena DeRosa and Senate President Karen Spilka. Oh, yes. And do you want to go ahead and come forward, the school committee and school board members? Come on, forward a little bit. James, come on up.
I'm Nancy Kavanaugh, I was on the jury. Could I?
Okay, oh, thank you. So you all ready?
Yeah.
So let me just say, if you have questions, you kind of have to come forward, because we don't have the, the audio. James, come on, come on forward. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Do we have Nancy lighting up on Zoom? Okay, yes, I got the thumbs up. And can the school committee go ahead and take their vote to open their meeting?
Yes.
Or just open it?
I think the opening is 7:60.
Okay, great. Welcome, thank you very much, Senate President Karen Spilka, please.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for inviting us, it's always a pleasure. It's been a while with COVID, it's great to see you. It's been a busy few weeks and months on Beacon Hill, so it's wonderful to kick off August by being here with all of you and seeing all of you. I want to start out by thanking James Arena DeRosa, Hopkinton's state rep, has hit the ground running, working really hard advocating for Hopkinton and Metro West, been a terrific partner, we speak regularly about issues for Hopkinton and the other towns, so it's really been a nice partnership from the get-go. So thank you for, for helping with him and, and with me in knowing your priorities and knowing what's happening in, in Hopkinton. I want to thank Select Board Chair Muriel for all of your hard work, Vice Chair Members Erfan, Mary Jo, Amy, I know you're listening somewhere, but I think it's, it's been a wonderful partnership and continues to be, and I don't know if people saw the fruits of that with COVID, with so much, so many of us in isolation, but things still happened here, a lot happened in Hopkinton, and communication kept going, so I want to thank you for, for all of that. I want to thank Nancy Richard Kavanaugh, the Chair of the School, and all of the school committee members. Norman, it's wonderful seeing you. Thank you for your continued communication, and Dr. Kavanaugh as well. You know, I believe Hopkinton has a great partnership and communication, and that has really helped us help you in the State House. So just, you know, I'll, I'll get to it. Beacon Hill, we've had a busy agenda over the last few weeks. I hope all of you are aware, we did pass the budget yesterday, I will go into that a little bit. I was there till late last night, because we also passed a part of a supplemental budget late, that not only extended some simulpass, but I was able to, to get in the 20 million for farm aid, the farm resiliency aid, which was really important after what happened to the farmers, over 75 farmers in the western part of the state, over 2,000 acres of, of land, and a lot of the farms, the crops, may not exist this summer, this fall, and the land, once it's been flooded by so many of the rivers that unfortunately has had sewage intertwined with the clean water of the river, often sometimes deposits bacteria, so there's a chance that the farmers may need to let the land lay fallow for six or seven years as well. So there was the concern that the only way the farmers could meet their loan and debt obligations and pay their workers was to sell their farms to development, and we all know, once that happens, the land is gone. And we as a state and the economy, it's more than just the western part of the state as a region that relies upon the crops for food, for the farmers' markets, for the schools, the healthy incentive program, our local options, it's, it's really a big part of the entire state's economy, so believed it was very important to help our farmers. We also included some funding for our hospitals across the state that are still reeling from the COVID and, and struggling to, to make sure that they survive as well. So we were able to get that done. We, we did a lot with infrastructure and transit authorities, including the Metro West Regional Transit. The Senate recently passed bills to remove barriers for people who are unhoused or homeless to get identification. Often, they, if they don't have an ID card, because they don't have a home to put on the, on the ID card, they, they have a hard time getting, even if they wanted, to find housing and jobs and benefits or anything, when you think about it, you need some sort of identification card, so it was like a catch-22. So we passed that, and, and we also passed a bill to allow our non-binary community to make their gender identity accurate on their birth certificates, state IDs, and their driver's license. That was brought to my attention by a young person from Natick who wrote me a letter saying they were about to apply for their license, and was feeling a lot of anxiety because they didn't identify as either male or female, and what would they do, and would I help them work and make the change? I enlisted that person, and they helped get this done, so now when somebody goes for a driver's license, they have a choice of male, female, or X. So, so that was exciting to finally get done. As I mentioned, we passed a historic budget that invests in all of our Massachusetts communities, sustains our economic vitality, and gives much-needed support to all of the residents. Our budget, in the beginning of this session in January, I spoke about the need for Massachusetts to create a Student Opportunity Plan, that we have all focused on K-12, and that was originally why I ran for the legislature to change the funding, but the more we looked into it, the more we realized we have overhauled the K-12 system with the Student Opportunity Act a few years ago, but we need to have a Student Opportunity Plan for early education, K-12, for higher education, for lifelong learning, and I'm not certain the state has ever had that, a real theme going through. So I'm really proud to say that this budget really focuses on state, the state creating what I, I believe we need is a Student Opportunity Plan. We fully fund the K-12, Chapter 70, you know, formula, and I'll get into, you know, what Hopkinton will get. We fully fund special education, charter school, you know, regional transportation, the state's commitments are met with that. We fully funded school meals for all of our students across the state, and we, we go further, though, there, there is a historic investment in early education and care of $1.5 billion, so that we will increase the rates we pay to the providers to ensure that they can sustain and thrive. The average cost for early education for one child is approximately $27,000 in Massachusetts. It's among the highest in the nation, and we need to change that so families can afford to send their youngsters. Research bears out that when a child has access to early education, they, they benefit their entire school career, their professional careers, they're higher earners, they contribute more to the, the society, to the state, so it's to our benefit in the long run to invest in early education and, and care, and clearly it helps that young child for their life. So we invest $1.5 billion to give, increase rates to providers, to increase rates to the workers at the early education, to give more help and assistance to the families and to help our kids. We even invested in funding, giving some grants to workers at these early ed centers who weren't earning enough to be able to send, send their own child to early education or care centers, so, so we tried to look at that. So that is, is the one spectrum, early ed, K-12, and then with public higher education. I'm really proud to say that the budget includes what the governor put forward for the Mass Reconnect Program, free community college for those 25 and older, but we go further. Another, you know, one of my major priorities, and it still is, is to make community college free by the fall of 2024. So we, we included the Mass Reconnect Program, but we also included free community college starting this fall for the nursing programs. All 15 community colleges have nursing programs. There is a dire need for nurses, so it will be free, the person still needs to meet the criteria to enter the, the program, but there's spaces available at our community colleges, and this will increase our number of nurses, and hopefully get more nurses into all aspects of the health provider field, thereby lowering the cost, overall cost of healthcare as well, so, so that's exciting. We also put out $15 million so that this, all 15 community colleges can start planning to have totally free community college by 2024. That will dramatically change the way our, our state public higher education systems works, and I'm also proud to say it included a Senate initiative, the Conference Committee Budget, Budget included a Senate initiative of tuition equity, offering in-state tuition for our undocumented students who have been here, who have been to at least three years of high school, so three years of, of Hopkinton High School, or has received a GED here, they would be eligible for in-state tuition. They still have to pay tuition, and I do want to mention, just for folks that are listening, an example, in-state for, say, UMass Amherst is about $17,000, for out-of-state, it goes to $29,000, and that still makes it just unattainable for so many of our students. So this would mean, again, they, they need to meet the three years, they need to meet the criteria, and they still would be paying tuition, so it actually has been estimated, Mass Taxpayers Foundation estimated that this would be, see a net revenue gain of at least $3.5 million, so it would help the Commonwealth as well. I, we, we, I think that will really help our workforce as well to grow the talent that we have right here in Massachusetts. Transportation, as you know, the Fair Share Amendment passed, we split it almost evenly for education, half for education, half for transportation, and that allowed us to make new badly needed investments in our state transportation system. All of you, I think, know how important our Metro West RTA is and the Regional Transit Authority. We, in the legislature, have officially passed the annual Chapter 90 bill, which dedicates $200 million to the Chapter 90 program, and Hopkinton will get its share, but we also, because of the fair share funding, we were able to invest an additional $100 million into Chapter 90, so Hopkinton will get an additional share of that $100 million, as well as its share of the $200 million. We can, continuing the theme of, of the RTA and regional equity, we included a historic $194 million investment in our RTAs, so the Metro West RTA will get a significant chunk from that as well, thereby helping to increase service, making it more affordable and accessible to our residents in Metro, in Metro. West. This doubles our investment in RTAs in just one year to expand safe, reliable transportation for all those that, you know, rely upon it. We also included a six-month pilot fare-free program for our RTAs so that people, this would help people take the RTA more, hopefully, get them to take public transportation more and learn, and help to expand the RTA catchment area as well. You know, it's crystal clear that we need to increase the amount of housing that we have in every corner of the state. So we have a lot of funding in the budget for housing relief, to keep people in their homes, as well as helping to develop. This tax relief package includes funding for new market-rate housing in gateway cities and included a comparable program to build more affordable housing by increasing the annual authorization for the state's low-income housing credit. We also have a proposal in the tax relief bill to allow cities and towns to adopt a local property tax exemption to encourage property owners to rent to lower-income residents. So if the town would want to do that, if it passes, that's an option. I'll get to the Hopkinton earmarks I'm particularly proud to support. If you remember last year, the legislature generously doubled Governor Baker's increase to local aid. We doubled that from 2.7% to 5.4% of an increase. This year, we doubled down again by going above and beyond the governor's increase to local aid in recognition of the needs of our municipalities. So Hopkinton, with the unrestricted local aid, commonly referred to as UGA, you know, U-G-G-A, UGA for people, yeah. What?
I'm still learning that one.
Yeah. Hopkinton is slated to receive $939,000 in unrestricted local aid, which would be a 3.2% increase over last year. With Chapter 70, we, just to let you know, the budget is an increase of 1.6% over last year. We increased UGA, local aid, to 3.2% to give more to our cities and towns. Chapter 70, we fully funded it, as I mentioned. So here in Hopkinton, our K-12 schools are set to receive about $9.8 million, which is more than $1 million or a 12.1% increase over last year. So that hopefully will help. And then, just to note some of the earmarks that we were able to get directly to support priorities right here in Hopkinton, after hearing from you and others here in Hopkinton with specific items, we were $100,000 to support Hopkinton's diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging program. And I applaud Hopkinton for focusing on these issues and continuing to make it a priority. This would also help with the continuation of your equity audit. On that note, I congratulate you and congratulate Julia Chan for joining the town as its first sustainability, economic development, and equity project manager. There's $60,000 to Hopkinton Public Schools for an equity audit of its curricula. $20,000 for Hopkinton Youth and Family Services for mental health promotion programs, access to care, and youth mental health program development. We know how necessary this is. It was a crisis before COVID. It's gotten even worse. You know it as well. You know, I don't need to go into that. $20,000 to Project Just Because to support their mission of helping struggling families in their time of greatest need. And on top of all that, I have continued to prioritize social and emotional learning in our schools. So there's $600,000 that I included for the mental health needs of the schools through my district, so it would be split among the six communities, part of which would be going to the Hopkinton Public Schools. And on that topic of education, I'm looking forward to seeing the Elmwood Elementary School project come together. And I, you know, I know it's a challenging project, but I know it'll free up a lot of space in the grades, and I look forward to being of assistance. We look forward to being of assistance in any way that we can be. This builds on the earmarks from last year. Some of them, you know, some of them have to do with implicit bias training, social and emotional learning in the schools, the age-friendly, dementia-friendly community, and many others. And I just applaud you for all that you have done to help build and grow the community in such a tight-knit community for all of us in Hopkinton. As many of you know, I never planned on being a legislator, let alone Senate president, so it still sometimes surprises me, to be honest with you. I started out as a social worker because I wanted to make a real difference in people's lives. But I think I look at all of you here today, and, you know, when I see these line items come to life in our communities like Hopkinton, I'm reminded, as a public official, all of us are here because we have the same ability and we want to make a positive difference in people's lives and help shape our communities to make them better. So I know sometimes it's tired, it's frustrating being a public official, often thankless. Some days, you wonder, why am I doing this? But, you know, you look at what you've created here in Hopkinton, and I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you for the work that you do every single day for the benefit of our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Say a few words, sure. Well, first of all, thank you all. It's such an honor to represent the town of Hopkinton. I'm really enjoying getting to know all of you. I think we've all had a chance to talk over the last several months, and it's been wonderful. I really appreciate and thank you, Senate President Spilka, for the warm welcome and being so supportive for me as someone new to Beacon Hill and the legislature. I really appreciate that. And I think she did an excellent job of outlining all that's happened around the budget. So I'm really just going to give a few highlights here, just add a little sort of color commentary, if you will, on some things that some of us have been talking about one-on-one or in groups over the past several months. So one of the things I just wanted to highlight, Universal School Meals, because of my work at USDA, it's been so important to me. And I talked with Nancy about this early on, and it's a great thing. But I want to remind everyone, it's not just for the kids that don't have enough money to buy school lunch. There's a dignity aspect. A hungry kid can't learn. But remember, it's also $1,200 to student for every person that has a child in school, every family that has someone in school. It's $1,200 they're going to save. So it's good for everybody. And as a parent of my kids that are older now, I can't tell you how many times they'd run out of the house without lunch money, without breakfast. So it's good for all the kids, and I just want to remind everybody of all that. The other thing I just wanted to point out, we had the meeting on LNG tanks that people are very worried about. I just wanted people to know that we did secure those reports, the federal and state reports. I think we've gotten them to Norman's office for anyone that has an interest in looking up the emissions reports. And it was interesting, I think they're interested in putting more safety things in place, but they were also worried that it was going to open up, that they have to change everything. Those are conversations I'm going to continue to have, and I'll make sure the town's aware as we get to that point. We've been kind of focused on the budget the last month or two, but just a heads up on that one. I also, I don't have to talk to anybody here about the problem with PFAS in Hopkinton. Mayor Joe called me a few weeks ago and reminded me that Hopkinton hosted the firefighting training for years. And the task force has finished its work, but the budget parameters on the funding that's going to be available aren't in place yet. I've talked a little with Chair Hogan and some others. But I assure you, when the time comes, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that there's some differentiation made for communities like Hopkinton, and it's close to water supply also on top of it. So it's not only the training, but also, as I understand it, it meets with some other problems as well. So we'll keep you apprised of that. I wanted to let everybody know, as I continue to get to know the community, we're having some upcoming roundtables in Hopkinton. We'll make sure that they get publicized. We're doing one with veterans, we're doing one with small business community. I'm actually on the Small Business Committee, so that's been an interesting journey for me, and in getting to know a lot of the business community along the way. I'll let everybody know that. We're going to do something with the seniors probably in the fall. And then, last thing I wanted to mention, we did get the $25,000 toward the Economic Development Officer. I know you had already started that process and have hired someone, which is fantastic. We all know there's going to be so much money coming from the federal government, from the state government, and I think towns in our position to go after that grant money are going to have challenges. So kudos to all of you for making that happen. We were happy to be able to support Hopkinton in that. But I know the person's been hired, and Norman, maybe in the next month or so, we can sit down. Anything that we can do to help, because there's so many money coming from so many places, it's sometimes hard to track it all. So we want to be a resource to the town, to that person, to your office, Norman, in the months ahead.
Thank you.
But that's all I wanted to add. I think some great things are happening. We have lots of challenges in the Commonwealth. We're really concerned about a lot that's going on around the environment. And thank you, Senator Spilka, I'm so excited. I'm also on agriculture, and the $20 million that she sort of put forward is going to make such a difference. And it's, again, just harking back to my time at USDA, you know, we don't have mega farms like they do in the Midwest, and all of the systems are set up nationally around FEMA. We don't meet the threshold unless it's a really, really bad disaster, which we don't want to happen. So I'm glad that we are going to help this time. And I know on the House side, and I probably should research to see if someone in the Senate's looking at it, we're putting in legislation to have a permanent fund for that. We have growers and farmers all over the Commonwealth, certainly in this district. I'm getting to know several of them as well. So hopefully, that's something we'll work on in the years ahead as well. So thank you all, and I guess we can take questions if they have any.
I do just want to mention that there has been some funding set aside for PFAS and efforts to improve the quality of drinking water. So, you know, we can help look into that, to see if anything might be available. Karen Edelman Foster is here, and we can follow up to see as well if there's something. But this is a problem that almost every single city in town, unfortunately, across the state is seeing. And we need to have a concerted effort to clean up and to how we're going to handle it. And we need some help from the federal government, for that matter, as well, because it is such a big problem. So the story is to be continued as well.
Well, it's a big interest story. First, I want to thank you both so much on behalf of the town of Hopkinton and the boards and the board members that are represented here. We not only appreciate all the work that you're doing, but we really appreciate you taking the time to come tell us about it. I'll just speak really briefly to some of what I heard that I appreciate. One of the things that we talk about here in Hopkinton is sort of building community cares, right? And that's what I heard out of those updates, is an awful lot of investments across areas of high interest and need. And we really appreciate, I really appreciate hearing from that. I know I'm not the only one. One of the things I, and it's not a question to be answered tonight, but one of the things that I struggle with is how to help communities like ours embrace alternative and expansive housing options, particularly when we face such challenges, finding space for the kids in our schools. And we want to do that, right? We want to make that happen. And I don't know if, you know, I think about affordable housing proper, but also just attainable housing across a spectrum of the socioeconomic scale. And then, you know, making sure that at the same time, those communities are being incentivized potentially, or whatever mechanisms are put in place so that those school departments in particular, but it's not just the school departments, it's the DPW, it's the fire department, and it's the police department, but so that all the departments, but primarily the school departments, are able to grow in the way that they want to grow and deliver the services that they have attained delivering at this rate. So that's just like, that's my like, super fanciful wish on a star. It would be great if we could support communities to build that kind of diversity across socioeconomic across all measures of diversity and still maintain excellent schools and services.
Services, yeah. Yeah, I'm hoping that the Senate, at least, and I don't know, I won't speak for the House in terms of what their agenda is, but that's something that I have asked the Housing Chair on the Senate side to take a look at the bills and what can we do for housing reform. It is very difficult to change some of the housing laws and zoning laws. It's probably one of the hardest things because so many communities have different ways that they handle it. But I think that we, again, as a state, need a more strategic, targeted approach. We need to increase our housing production for both market-rate housing, affordable housing, but we also need to make sure that it's embraced by our cities and towns in a way that people feel welcome and want to have this additional housing.
Thank you. Shadul, do you have any questions?
Just a couple, I think. First of all, thank you for coming tonight and providing us a great update, and even more so for your wonderful services, both of you, to our state, to our community, and your relentless work towards social justice for a long time, for economic development in our zone and in our areas that we are seeing improving over time. So kudos to you and your colleagues. I think it's great to have you tonight. I think you covered things very well, which also says you're on top of majority of the issues. And I speak to James quite often, and I know he's very accessible. Thanks to him for giving the time to our community. And I think tomorrow, we are meeting on the LMPA with some of our neighbors. Appreciate all your attention and effort. Couple of questions top of the mind. One is that a few weeks back, Muriel and I got the opportunity to join your Economic Development Summit, which was really eye-opening and great, I think, thought leadership from the state that we have observed. And as you have stated through your commentary and know, that as a town, as we are proud of, you know, our town being affluent, our town having a great school and great services and wonderful neighborhood, really enjoy the quality of life here, we are also worried that with the increasing cost of capital projects, increasing cost of services, the growth that we have seen in the last 10 years, which is almost doubling our population, is putting pressure on all of our services, obviously, and budget being the top one. And you rightfully mentioned about Elmwood School and other school projects. So we are connecting those dots with what can we do more on the economic development side. And we look forward to cooperate more and see what are the opportunities that the state brings, the federal funding in some cases brings, maybe the infrastructure bills that has passed but not yet liquefied to, you know, achievable or accessible levels. But I think building the new school to manage our growth and quality of our students, our education, is a prime concern, given that we foresee that, you know, burden or add to our tax base already, our individual residential taxes already. So open to more discussions, more collaborations, and how we can do that. And related to that, I've noticed that there are seven to eight state agencies, but it came out through the conversation of the summit as well, that how do we navigate it for better, you know, exchange of thoughts and access to several fundings. So something to think about as you are experts and leaders in this space and our representatives, how we can channel our needs better to connect with some of those. And maybe some are already available, we just don't know. And maybe some we need to, you know, make our case, of course, for better access. The second one I would also point out is, while we are also coining the idea of being a commuter rail community and the zoning law that will allow us to build more affordable housing and access to, you know, multi-housing, which would bring, you know, long-term better equity, better diversity in affordability, and good for the Commonwealth in many ways. For the interim, we are also worried that there are some comprehensive planning that we need to do on our end and also see from the state to make it really a success and bring the benefits that we are trying to achieve from that. So to give you an example, as a new zoning, we could potentially be looking at 300, 500 new multifamily houses. Now, as connecting to our previous... Now, as connecting to our previous statements, we are growing fast, and as it is, we have tons of load on our services and schools. So while we are getting some benefits from being in that zoning, we are seeing the challenge of pushing that further on our budget, services, school capacity and all of those. But I didn't see the state connecting those dots to the zoning vision that was laid out. So something to think about. I know we're not going to solve everything tonight, but as you have been kind enough to come here and share your vision and all the great work, I just wanted to add these two as well. Thank you.
Okay, we definitely will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Erfan.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for the update. Sounds like a lot of work has been done. A couple of things that jumped out at me is the farm aid. And while I commend it, I think we're kind of, need to keep our eyes open as to why did that happen? And keep our eyes open as to, you know, it's only going to get worse. And obviously, I'm leading towards climate resiliency. And I think that we should take a conserv, fiscally conservative approach and prevent the massive damage in the future by spending now on...
I agree.
And, you know, burying our heads in the sand is not going to do any good. So keep up the good work on that.
I agree. And just to let you know, I've had that discussion with the Commissioner of EMDAR, the agricultural resources is terrific. And, you know, like even something, looking at the dams along the Connecticut River and the Deerville River and wondering, could we have done something more preventative so that they wouldn't overflow the way they did? And coordinating with our states north to us, we had heard that, I don't know if this is a rumor or not, but that one of the states, in an effort to alleviate some of their, prevent their flooding, they may have opened up their dams even more to let more of their river water flow down into Massachusetts. So, you know, this is new. I mean, this is supposedly once in a generation, but it was even worse than that, the way that the flooding. The aid, thankfully, that the way we worded it would not only help the farmers, the 75-plus farmers in Western Mass, but there was an early frost in February, March, where a lot of the stone fruit farmers lost their, not only their crops, but potentially their trees, so the peaches, the apples, et cetera. So this aid would help them as well. So we are looking into that. And again, we're trying to work with our federal delegation to get some assistance for that.
Excellent.
No, it's a great point, Erfan. And sadly, these once-in-a-generation incidents are happening every few years, so, right? That's a great...
Yeah, we need to rename our, you know, 10-year, 50-year, 100-year storms. It's, they're a lot more frequent now.
They're every Tuesday.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to...
So we should all pray for no more rain.
Stop eating up the planet. That'll do it. And then the other thing is, when we're talking PFAS, I think we also just keep in mind that there's a lot of homeowners on private wells throughout the Commonwealth that really are, don't know what to do when it comes to PFAS. And, you know, municipal systems are, are one thing, and it's fantastic that we're helping, but some assistance to homeowners for dealing with PFAS on private wells would be tremendous. Thanks.
Here, Joe.
Yep, there are a couple of things. One is I'm glad to hear you're increasing the MWRTA money, because our branch of the MWRTA has been underfunded.
No longer. This will catch them up. This will catch them up.
Because that's what we want.
And more. This will catch them up and more. There was specific language.
Behind gas and a few of the others, quite a bit.
Yes.
And they thought it was because we were newer service, but I'm glad to hear that.
Specific language in the budget to help them. And if another RTA in the same situation, it will help the other RTAs in need of being caught up.
Now, the possibility with the PFAS, I've been talking to James a lot, a lot about PFAS, and I have all this correspondence with me, and I have some information for you. Property tax exemption, increase, no, what do you mean by that? Because, because I've had an idea on that, and is it for a specific, it's like a home rule?
If a homeowner has, has an apartment or something and wants to rent it to a low-income tenant, there would be some assistance to help with that.
Okay, because we, also talking to people, I had an idea of maybe a home rule petition for Hopkinton, because if we have to join the MWRA, it's going to be billions, and we are going to lose our seniors. They're already talking about it. I mean, go up to seniors, and they're, they're talking about not being able to afford to stay here much longer. And I want to keep them in their own homes. So for seniors staying in their own homes, I would like to see a home rule petition, now I don't know if it's possible, to exempt them from the MWRA costs or from huge project. Exempt just them for that project only. You know, instead of a blanket exemption, have something that would mitigate their having, because there's no way they can, they can join the rest of the town, pay the taxes for, for these giant projects we're looking, we're looking at. And is anybody think that that's a, that's a possibility? I mean, I know we just, I was in on the Hopkinton bill years ago, and that was a home rule thing.
Taxes, I mean, is it the, the town or, you know, who, who would pay? Is it just exempting them and then it would be spread out?
Yeah, it would have, the burden would have to be picked up by the rest of the taxpayers, and they would have to agree to it.
Right, right. You know, we can talk certainly further.
Depends on how many, how many people would fall in the category that, that...
Right, I don't know who, who would figure out who would be exempt. I mean, there's certainly, this is a possibility, and we could talk further and hear from what your thoughts are.
Very good. I'm looking forward to it. I was really surprised too to find that we weren't part of Chair Hogan's bills, because our fire department supposedly was responsible for the foam and teaching fire foam up there, and here we are.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not that, it's not in there, it's that they haven't gotten to that point yet. They haven't, they haven't clarified how the funding streams are going to work. So there'll be an opportunity to, to get in there and hopefully say, listen, you know, there are some communities in the state that, that hosted these trainings, and they have an extra special problem because of it. So, yeah.
I mean, if there's funding that's allocated, it would have to be allocated by the legislature, and then it would be criteria as to allocation could be built into that funding, sort of a formula, leaving some for the discretion for the administration. But these are things that could all be built into as part of the allocation.
And just for us here, we'll look at it. One is House Bill 2197, and the other is House Bill 2339 that we would want to look at.
Or, I mean, Senator Seer has a bill, there's several bills concerning PFAS, so Senate as well as House bills.
Okay, good. No, I...
Okay, thanks, Karen Jo. Amy, I'm going to go to you, and then I'll also go after you. I'll go to Nancy, who I think is on Zoom.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, thanks for the audience updates. I don't think I have any questions, but just if we could get, I think it comes out of a whole lot of information, and I told you at the beginning, I forgot some that was at the beginning. So if you could get that in writing, or maybe we're incentive, you know, after, so we just hold through, that'd be great. And I just want to confirm, next season's going to have free lunch for all schoolchildren next year, is that correct?
Yes, yes. Breakfast and lunch.
If they have breakfast, yeah.
That's great. I haven't seen news articles where it was going back before. I'm really glad we're able to get that.
Okay. Nancy, how?
Hi. First, I just want to thank Representative Miranda Rosa and the State, Senate President Philbrook for coming and giving us such detailed updates. Also, for your tireless advocacy at the State House on behalf of Hopkinton, on behalf of schools, not just in Hopkinton, but in the district, particularly interested in the assistance you have both given to our district and to other schools on the increase in the tuition on special ed schools. I know that was a complicated issue and a lot of back and forth. I appreciated Representative Miranda Rosa, your communication on that with me was really excellent, and I appreciate it being able to share that with my colleagues. Also, very happy with the free meals at school. I think you raised a good point about the dignity issue, and it's not just the kids who would previously qualified under free and reduced lunches that are benefiting, but also those kids that are kind of in the middle in the gap that maybe wouldn't have been able to get pre or reduced lunches that are able to get meals. And I think as State Senator Philbrook had said, kids can't learn when they're hungry at school. So much appreciated that. And also really pleased to see the $600,000 earmarked for the district, the schools in your district for mental health, that's really important. And as I think you both have made reference to at different points, that coming out of COVID, it's even more needed than it was before. So thank you both for being here tonight and for all of your work on our behalf.
Thank you.
And for the other members of the school committee and the school department? Would you like to say anything or ask anything? I'll say.
I'd like to say thank you personally to them, because whenever I could, I hate to say this, but can you, people at home can't hear you if you don't come forward.
I know. I know. Thanks, Dr. Kramer. Thank you. I was only going to talk for two seconds anyway, but I wanted to thank you personally, because whenever we reach out, whether it's by Zoom or by email, or even if Senate President Philbrook, you have lunch with a group of area superintendents, you are always so responsive. And so I think all of what we've heard tonight comes as a result of your responsiveness. So thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
I just wanted to mention this, so we couldn't hear, like, Dr. Kramer, so.
Well, still, we have a great team.
I apologize for that. It was a very nice, appreciative, thank you to our representatives who are working so hard. But thanks for letting us know, Amy. So that was unfortunate. Appreciate the effort. So at any rate, thank you so much. Do Mr. Kamalo or Ms. Lazarus, do you have any questions or thoughts?
Well, I thank Karen, as well as Jeff Myers from their offices, always accessible, always responsive, responsive. And for the public, we are also working on three special acts for Hopkinton. One for the senior tax relief for water and sewer. The second one is the list that we can utilize when we are investing funds. And then the last one is the easements that we approved at town meeting that will allow us to repair the Lake Massey Dam through Millford.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you again. This has been wonderful. Thank you for all your hard work, but thank you for coming and spending so much time with us and working so hard on behalf of all the towns but Hopkinton in particular. We really appreciate your representation and your responsiveness.
Thank you so much for having us.
Take care.
Thanks so much.
Have a great rest of the summer, if we don't see you. And to everybody with, have a great and happy and healthy summer, actually.
Happy and healthy, that's it. That's important.
That's the dream.
It's going to be a trend. Take care. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. For all of us to have a picture?
Yeah.
Oh, the whole group?
And the school.
Of course.
All right, squishy. Yeah, yeah. Squishy, squishy.
Even more.
Oh, even more. Yeah. I just have to try to get a little...
When it's time, so we're looking the right way.
Okay, me first. Thank you. Thank you.
One, two, three. Y'all are great.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you always, every time. Hey! I haven't seen you in 40 years. 40 years.
Very.
Good to see you. You do, you do, right? You can, right? Love what you did for me.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yes. That was really... You think we can do?
No, I'm not. I mean, I'm really... Take care. Thank you so much.
So much.
Thank you. It's good to see you. Yeah, there you go. All right. We're going to get back. Thank you all for coming. Okay. I am going to, how many of you are here? Oh, well, we have three of us. I'm going to suggest we continue to pass, skip the annual appointments. The order of taking should be very quick. There's no controversy, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
So, Shadul, if you'll make a motion on the order of taking, we're going to consider adopting an order of taking for Box Mill Road, which was accepted as a public way at the May 1, 2023 town. So go ahead and make the motion.
I move that we, motion for the Box Mill?
Yep.
Do we wait for other?
No.
Okay. I move that the board vote person to Article 36 of the May 1, 2023 Annual Town Meeting to execute an order of taking of the private way known as Box Mill Road, together with easement for drainage, utility, and other purposes.
Amy, will you second?
Yep, same number, second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We're doing Box Mill.
Okay.
Yep, so by rule, call vote. Erfan?
Erfan, surely, yes.
Shadul Maran, yes.
Amy?
Amy O'Donoghue, yes.
Ariel Kramer, yes. Okay, so we, I appreciate everybody's patience who came here for the trails conversation. I know we are off schedule, but we're going to, we're going to start that conversation now. We're going to consider discussing the town's existing trails-related committees and may consider revisions of the, to the charges of the Upper Charles Trail Committee and the Trail Coordination and Management Committee, and/or disbanding the Upper Charles Trail Committee and creating a new committee or committees. And for this, we're going to, I'm going to turn it over. Erfan's going to lead the conversation, and it's going to be sort of one of his primary projects to help support this process over this year.
Thank you. So as background, you know, we had a town meeting vote. It was non-binding, and the idea was to disband the Upper Charles Trails Committee. As a select board, we said, well, the Upper Charles Trails Committee is a creation of the select board and not something that comes from the, from town meetings, so it's really up to us. We conducted a survey, and I think we all in the select board kind of agreed that the results really didn't provide any guidance. So I'm just going to go, go ahead and share my vision as to what I think the Upper Charles Trails Committee should be. In my view, I think it should be a separate committee. I think that the, or I believe, the Upper Charles Trails Committee has made efforts to be transparent in that everything is public. But I've had discussions with members of the committee, members of the public, as to what is wrong with it and how can it be fixed, rather than just kind of eliminating the committee altogether, or making it a subcommittee of the Trails Committee. So a vision that I would have is, that I would like to see, is for the committee to actually go through some training as to how to run, run a meeting, how to organize, and to present the options. Right now, the charges... Right now, the charge is to, for the committee to present options for the select board to consider, both en route and, well, actually, en route and funding and how is it all gonna get done. I want to say, you know, clearly, that the Upper Charles Trails Committee has done tremendous work so far, and it seems to me that there was one portion, which is the portion of the segment that was to, that was discussed, go down Hayden Row. And that's kind of appears to me is when things kind of fell, fell apart. Other segments, um, like coming from, from the Ashland side, has been fairly, um, non-controversial. Um, it's just this one section. So, where, where I come to is, how can we find out what else was considered and why? What happened? Why was it turned down? Why was it, you know, why was this option, uh, on the table? To get there, I think that some training would be helpful, and a basic structure on the committee as to how are the meetings gonna be held when, when there is public comment and there are other ideas put, although they can't be discussed at that time, that it be put on the agenda for a future meeting, so it can be fully discussed and vetted, and so we all have an understanding as to what happened. So, this is how I am viewing things. I am just one member of the select board, and I'm inviting the rest of the board members to share their thoughts. Um, I'll start with Mr. Menon.
Sure. Thank you, Frank. I have a few points, just to make sure. There's been a lot of discussions, great information, and, um, I think a lot of activities around this for the last couple of months, and I thank everyone for participating. Again, I wanna just repeat what I always say, we are one Hockington, and we all can work together to solve something. So, this is something that has been a challenge for the last couple of years and for the last few months, and has been on our radar in many ways, positive and negative. But eventually, I, I hope we all get to come together and move forward and get over this hump and go for doing what we want to do, which is build a, build the right trail for the right, um, you know, for everyone, and make it a better, better Hockington with better trails. We have great trails, we want better. Uh, that said, I also recognize that there's been tremendous work done, as Erfan mentioned, with the current, by the current UCTC and TCMC, and a wonderful group of volunteers working hard for decades at times, and the effort is and passion that they bring to the table, and I'm fully appreciative of that, and kudos to them, and thanks to them for all the good work that they have done. And I have seen the list that I, that we went through several times. It's a tremendous, tremendous work. We should all be proud of that, certainly. Uh, now, I also recognize the problem, that visibly, the committee has been experiencing a lot of conflict over the last couple of years, if not the last few months more so, and, you know, has been dysfunctional in some ways to moving the needle and moving the conversation and the decisions that we so dearly need to really make progress. Uh, although progress is slow, I think the challenges also were apparent between the two committees, TCMC and UCMC, UCTC. And, um, a lot of it is situational, a lot of it is at times, you know, appears to be personal, and I also think some of it, if not a lot of it, is structural in some ways that came out through these discussions, even though, you know, it could be based on one particular issue that kind of got more light than others. So, I think, you know, in general, if we look at structurally, as you were saying, we are in one town, we wanna build great, um, trails for the town, and the Upper Charles is one of the bigger projects, of course, for the trail. But to really have a coherent, comprehensive overall, uh, vision and plan for the trail, we want, in my view, one entity that can work as a, you know, um, overall, on a overall comprehensive plan and work as one body together, which currently we don't see as much with the two committees. And at times, I've heard on certain instances, there has been competition for funding, even by the two, because funding is, of course, uh, uh, you know, resources are limited, so we have to prioritize. And then there is, um, sometimes we have heard that, uh, both parties, or many of them, feel like their voices are not heard from each other. So, it's almost sounding like we are in one town, working for the same goal, maybe on different segments or different parts of it, and one big project, but working in very siloed fashion, and almost competing on various fronts among us. And that's not very productive. Even if we go over this particular issue or hump, I, I sense that it'll come back, or it has the potential to come back, um, on another issue if we don't have that structural communication, structural decision-making, structural funding request, and all those as one entity. So, to be a one entity, and again, overall, structure-wise, I feel I don't have a strong opinion, but something that we can solve, um, that can solve these issues, these problems. And I'm leaning towards having one committee with a subcommittee for a special project or a large project like, um, Upper Charles, because we have done that on other occasions, um, successfully, like the school is a good example, and there are, um, other instances where these things work better because of the communication and, again, having one vision across. The third reason I'm also leaning towards it, that as public officials, I feel that when we want to find some common ground, we wanna hear the voice of the residents. So, we heard from our various groups on various public forums, we heard from the town meeting where there was, uh, a vote, and that spoke a lot about what they want to do in these cases, even though it's never as comprehensive because of the participation being limited in the town meetings. Then we heard from the survey as well, we heard from the, um, TCMC in the recent meetings as well. And I know, again, you know, this is not very comforting and, you know, easy decision for everyone, but that's where I'm coming to that, um, that structure, because I think that will help unite the committees better with better visibility, better working towards the same vision, and working towards the, uh, you know, prioritizing the funding and the activities and planning and executing on that. Now, the other part I also wanna mention is that this is not gonna be, in any mean, not recognizing the personalities or recognizing the volunteers who are so dedicated or have been so dedicated, and it doesn't also, you know, shouldn't also stop us from harvesting the subject matter expertise or the passion of all the volunteers involved. But I feel we need to do structurally something different, rather than doing the same thing, same thing again, and expecting different results. So, that's, that's how I'm coming at it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Who are we talking to out there? Mr. Harrow, are you disrupting my meeting? Good heavens.
My sincere apologies.
Okay. Last, last time. Um, all right. Um, first of all, um, I recognize that this has been a very difficult process for people on all sides of the question. I will also put it out there that it has been hard for me as well, so I, I get it. Um, I appreciate people's investment, um, and I appreciate the really respectful, thoughtful conversations and reworkings and, and thoughts I've heard from a lot of people, and the communications that I've started to get via email are much more, uh, much more in line with, like, problem-solving, solutioning, um, go-forward positions, and for that, I am incredibly grateful. So, um, I think we all prize our trails. I'm confident that we prize our trails, all types. Um, and we, as a community, we want trails that are suitable for all, um, all participants, but, you know, they can be different too, right? So, smaller trails that are more challenging. Um, it also seems to be really hard sometimes when the trails are gonna come near us. Um, so I recognize that, um, there's a lot of work that we have to do with both trails committees or a trail committee, or however it's structured, to make sure that we have a process to engage with those that are closest to the trails that are being discussed at the time. So, there really is an opportunity for people to raise their concerns and have them addressed. Let's see. And Charlotte just said, you know, I'm, I'm very, I'm very mindful of the vote at town meeting, and we wanna respect the, the votes and, and of the town meeting. What concerns me, though, is that we have a responsibility to, um, to actually problem-solve and have a go-forward position that we have constructively believed, um, it is, is a constructive go-forward position. So, I don't see it as one committee. I've, I've tried to do that. I'm candid. I see it as two committees. Um, there are pros and cons to a committee and a subcommittee, um, uh, and two separate committees. Potentially, there should be one person on, if there's two committees, one person serving on each committee so that there's direct, uh, direct connection. Um, so I, I see it as two committees. I don't know that I am, I, I am at all sort of emotionally attached to subcommittee structure or not. Um, I will point out that, for example, like the elementary school building committees, those are actually not subcommittees of the school committee, those are subcommittees of the select board, which makes them different committees, but with connected purpose, for sure. Um, and maybe that's, maybe, you know, if that's important to people, we talk about that. Um, but what has become most, um, most important for me to ask my colleagues to consider tonight is to, um, is to reinstate the Upper Charles Trail Committee so that they can enter into this conversation for the next couple of months, um, have the meeting that they would like to have with the Trails Committee and the Upper Charles Trail Committee and the, um, town leaders, and, um, actually enter into the conversation of what has been accomplished, how the goals are going. I would also add that I would, I would like it to be with the explicit understanding that we are, um, I don't think this board, nobody's ever asked us, but I'll put it out there, I would like a, um, an explicit, um, statement that we do not support the trail up Hayden Row, along Hayden Row, um, and we're not talking about that site, segment. Um, it's not, it's not a segment that's under consideration. So, I think that that, I think that needs to be said because people, I think people were worried, and legitimately worried, that, um, that that was still being considered. And I think that if we, for the purposes of this conversation, to develop a go-forward position, we explicitly say that that is not a possible, um, possible trail piece. Um, I think that that could help. Um, but I think that as a responsibility to this town, we need to explore the western option, as it was, has always been conceived, not, not a particular option, the western option, a western option, and the eastern option, right? So, we, we still wanna explore whatever options are out there without a preconceived commitment to any of them until we know more about all of them.
Right. So, I'm glad you brought that up, because I do think that it is important to allow the Upper Charles Trails Committee to meet, but for the limited purposes of providing an, an update and being able to meet with Trails Committee and, and the select board so we can have a productive discussion as to what has been done, um, and, uh, and a vision for, for how we move forward. So.
Well, I wanna thank the Trails Committee for all the wonderful trails we have in town that have been brought up by them, but when I was here in the Upper Charles Trail Committee, the idea was to join to another community, and it is, and it's for a big trail. It's for a trail that's gonna allow handicap, mobility impaired, bicycles, walking, running, uh, all, all kinds of things. So, it's, it can't be a wooded trail. It, it has to be, you know, a much larger entity, and, uh, that's what, I think we need two different ones, because the, our Trails Committee is for Hockington, and it's for all the trails in Hockington, and to develop new trails in Hockington. But the Upper Charles Trail is to try to develop something between communities and something large, and with a lot of, uh, travelers on it, different kinds of, of travelers than a wooded trail, and, or not, not even a wooded trail, but, you know, using stone or a trail for runners, or trails, like we have some wonderful trails, and I love them. And I thank the TCMC for doing it, but they're a town, that's a town thing. The Upper Charles Trail is supposed to connect to communities, and, uh, that's different. I mean, the, the TCMC doesn't have the parameters, the permission or the mission statement to hook up to another community, uh, on this kind of a trail. So, it, it's two different animals, and, you know, it's oranges and apples, two different things. Um, that's just my opinion, I guess, but I.
Okay. Um, so I guess I would say that I do also lean, like, um, towards keeping them as two separate committees, um, and, because I think they do have two separate purposes. I like to know the idea of taking, making sure it's clear that the separate, so Hayden Row is taken off the table. Um, and I, I guess I would add a caveat to unless future town meeting voted to put it back on the table, because that's how I got kind of a move by town meeting, because you can understand that if somebody thinks that, that Hayden Row plan that crossed once, people might be more receptive. We don't know. I think it should be definitely taken off the table until further town meeting vote. Uh, I would also like to, I would recommend, though, that we have revisions to the charges, probably of both committees, and I'm happy to reinstate the, the UCTC so that they can discuss possible revisions to their charges. Um, I personally recommend it to be fewer members, maybe seven, more alternates that don't vote, and that the liaisons would not vote. I think that would be a more efficient committee, and I think one member of the UCTC should be a member of the TCMC. Um, let's see. And then, and the survey that I had comments about how to improve transparency, and I think that might be good to have those written into the charge as well. Um, and I would, I, I guess I'd like to get what everyone says, but I would like to ask to also make a statement that the, the trail should be inclusive of all, of all residents, whether that's the whole trailer or not, I guess it could be open to either. Uh, and then I want to get a little clarity on the committee, subcommittee, because I think people may be talking about that incorrectly. So, to me, a subcommittee, I thought, could be comprised only of members of the other committee, and so when people are talking about elementary school building committee or zoning advisory committee, those are not really subcommittees that the doors that appoint those. Um, but subcommittee appointed by the elementary school building committee, and it just has one of our members. And zoning advisory committee is appointed by the planning board, but it's not really a subcommittee of the planning board. So, I'm not sure, so I think, could we just confirm in town stuff, the difference between a subcommittee versus a committee for the brother committee?
Yeah. Um, a subcommittee may take two forms. One form may be, um, identifying members of an existing group to, um, work on a particular topic on behalf of the larger group. That's a subcommittee, option one. Uh, option two is what I call a working group, where the, um, the mother committee identifies individuals who may come outside or will not be members of the main group, uh, to work on a particular topic and then report back to the main group. So. I think that might be good to have those written into the charge as well. And I would, I guess I'd like to get what everyone says, but I would like to ask to also make a statement that the, the trail should be inclusive of all, of all residents, whether that's the whole trailer or not. I guess it could be open to either. And then I want to get a little clarity on the committee, subcommittee, because I think people may be talking about that incorrectly. So to me, a subcommittee, I thought, could be comprised only of members of the other committee. And so when people are talking about elementary school building committee or zoning advisory committee, those are not really subcommittees at the doors that appoint them. It's like what appointed the elementary school building committee, and it just has one of our members. And zoning advisory committee is appointed by the planning board, but it's not really a subcommittee of the planning board. So I'm not sure. So I think, could we just confirm with town staff the difference between a subcommittee versus a committee for the brother committee?
Yeah. A subcommittee may take two forms. One form may be identifying members of an existing group to work on a particular topic on behalf of the larger group. That's a subcommittee, option one. Option two is what I call a working group, where the, the mother committee identifies individuals who may come outside or will not be members of the main group to work on a particular topic and then report back to the main group.
So, I mean, like, what is the feel of the board as to, I mean, I would prefer to have two committees rather than one committee. Mr. Mannan, you've made it clear, you prefer two, or a subcommittee, one committee with a subcommittee below it, right?
Right, yeah. My main argument is twofold. One is that we, after all these, we really can't do status quo. What we are talking about is to me, status quo and expecting a different result. That, to me, I, I, I don't find enough rationale for it. Because, you know, the purpose of all these discussions, all these brainstorming, feedback and everything, is to find a new frontier. And if you're not doing it, it, it's, you know, not a productive outcome, in my view. And second is, we are not solving the problem of having one vision. I find it hard to believe that in one town, there would be, think about three schools, right? If we are building three schools, we need to have a vision of a comprehensive what those schools are and how the funding happens. We can't, I can possibly envision that, okay, you build your trail, you build your trail, you're on your own, you know, we don't need a one vision. And that's going to trigger conflicts at times because it's one town, we have trails around, and we need a plan for overall trails, and this is one of the trails. And I actually could see that we have instances where there was funding contention, where there was opinion contention because of that. So how do we combine those visions and those thoughts and align them together? Unless we do that, I think the structural problem will, will continue.
Okay. So, Mirel, you would also support having the two separate committees?
Yes, I do. And I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear what you said, Mirel.
I just said I do too.
I see, okay. So I am, I, I want to make sure.
But I'm mindful of what Mr. Mannan is saying.
Yes, yes.
Because we're not going to do the exact same thing and get the exact same result and say, ah, we're done. So, you know, with, with regard to just saying status quo, that's not what we're suggesting. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that the, the charter be, the charge be rewritten to provide for the transparency, to provide for, you know, different routes, a structure for how the meetings would be held, you know, minutes coming out and showing what exactly was considered, why was something not considered, why was it rejected, why was this preferred? That, that, that's, that's where I'm, where I'm going. Because I think you're absolutely right, doing the exact same thing, we have to be mindful of the, of the town meeting vote.
If I could add to, I do also agree with Mirel, Ira and Mary Jo that it should be two separate committees, but I hope that we can address some of Mr. Mannan's concerns about, we don't want to keep the status quo. If we revised the two charges, we, we'll probably have to reappoint or appoint new people to all the roles because if we didn't have the exact number of members, we would have to come start a local maintenance. So I think that gives the opportunity for it not to be the exact same thing and not the exact same process as before.
Yeah, correct, correct.
And to the chair, I, I just want to comment that it's, you know, even with two committees, if we are solving those structural problems, I, I think that would make a, you know, better way to operate, meaning how can we have one vision, how can we have the transparency, and how can we have participation of both the committees to the final decisions? It shouldn't be one going over other or one going behind other, if, that is, even perception-wise. Technically, it may not be the case, but obviously perception becomes reality if it's not done, you know, with the proper procedure. And also, how can we engage us and the town better in making those financial priorities or overarching plan? So we can again act as one, that is. Structurally, if two committees and the subcommittee and ESBC, those technicalities are leave it with the, you know, expertise of the town administration in some, some ways. Live the committee now, or do we want to have, as I think I've also seen some of the communication from residents and from the committee members, to have a joint meeting for the future, which we can do without reviving the committees? And then once the joint discussions decide on the actual structure and the new frontier, so to speak, then we adopt and go with that. I would lean for that, just to, you know, not revive some of the old conversations again.
Sure. So what I was thinking, I'm just giving a sec. What I was thinking was just allowing them to, to meet again for limited purposes of developing their presentation for a joint meeting.
And being in the conversation.
And being a part of the conversation.
For the reformation and the, the new charge. So I appreciate that. That is what I was going to suggest to, can I make a motion?
You certainly may.
So I'd like to make a motion to, to direct town staff to be thinking the two-committee structure with reformatted structures and charges that accommodate the information that we are receiving from town residents, to reinstate the Upper Charles Trail Committee for the purposes of engaging in these robust conversations about, we want to hear from them, we have heard from individuals, we want to hear from them about what has been accomplished, what is still in front of them, how they envision the charge. And also to take a position that this board does not support a trail along Hayden Row as it was, as it was presented until a future town meeting, unless a future town meeting was to, to change that vision.
Or, or a second?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Mannan?
Mr. Mannan, yes.
Mirel Kramer, yes.
Mary Jo, the Franny, yes.
Amy?
Amy, yes.
Nerfana's rule is also a yes. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, we are way behind schedule.
Way behind schedule. I just want to give last thoughts. So the next, I think the next step is to have a joint meeting with the Trails Committee, Select Board, and the Upper Charles Trails Committee. Upper Charles Trails Committee is like open to present their plan, show everything, show us everything that's been done and what's, what's been considered and what has been, has been rejected.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. To my fellow board members, and actually to Mr. Kamala and Ms. Lazarus, are we able to put off the annual appointments to the future meeting for the Board of Appeals?
Yes, but you may want to reappoint for special constable.
Oh, yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Is the board comfortable putting those appointments off? Okay.
I just have something to add to that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
For Board of Appeals, we have an opening for both a full member and an associate member, and the applicants are all brand new. I personally would be much more comfortable promoting one of the existing associate members to the full member role. So before our next meeting, we could check with those three members, Miss John Mosher, Kevin Dexter, and Arnold Cohen, if they would be going, want to be promoted to the full member, and then we could appoint two of them to people to the associate role. That's just my point. It's a very complicated legally granted board.
That's really good food for thought. I appreciate that, Amy, a lot. I think that that makes sense. Are we able to, I'm actually the liaison. I'll reach out. I'll take that, actually. Look at me go. I better write it down or I won't remember. But that's a really great idea.
So do we want to just?
Yes, the motion, yes.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I move to appoint William E. Pickett Jr. as special constable to a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions? I roll call vote, Mrs. Mary Jo.
Mary Jo, Franny, yes.
Nerfana's rule, yes.
Mr. Mannan, yes.
Amy.
Amy, yes.
Mirel Kramer, yes. Thank you all. Let me ask this question at 8:35. Can we do, can we do this, the consent agenda and the town managers' report and then see if we have the energy and enthusiasm for the goals at this meeting? Okay. So I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda where we will consider the minutes of July 11th and July 20th, pre-permit application for the 24th Annual Michael's Run Walk, held by the Respite Center in memory of Michael Liznow. The event is to be held on October 21st, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. The starting point of the race will be Ash Street, and the ending point will be the Town Common. There are road closures involved. This is a really wonderful event, I'll say as an aside, except a gift of land on the Turkey Ridge subdivision in accordance with the vote under Article 37 of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and to consider accepting a gift of land for the open space purposes in the Chamberlain-Weyland subdivision in accordance with the vote, Article 43 of the 2022 Annual Meeting, and with regrets, but also celebration, accept the resignation of Carrie Reed from the Conservation Commission because she is now our DPW director.
That's right.
Second.
Second. Any questions, does anybody want to pull any of those items out? Okay, by roll call vote, Mrs. Franny?
Mary Jo, the Franny, yes.
Nerfana's rule, yes.
Mr. Mannan, yes.
Amy?
Amy, yes.
Mirel Kramer, yes. Okay. Mr. Kamala, the town managers' report.
Ooh, sorry. What it is, is during the consent agenda is, usually when I do this, and I just want to bring up the fact that one of our own town members, a business member of town, Rob Cornell, passed away at the age of 64 or 65, something like that. And he has done a lot of good things. He owned the Cornell Club. His father owned it before him. And he had ball fields back there and soccer fields and baseball games, and he did concerts for the community and the My One Wish Foundation. And he was just a really good citizen when he had the business here in Hawkeington. He did a lot for the town. So I just wanted to bring up the fact that he will be missed.
Thanks, Mary Jo. He will indeed be missed. He will indeed be missed.
Yes, he will.
Okay. Mr. Kamala?
Yeah, thank you. Main Street Corridor project. Let me start off by thanking members of the public who have submitted comments regarding the Hayden Row Main Street intersection. Your comments are very well taken. Two points to share with you. The striping that you see right now is temporary. We are working with MAST DOT, which is the second point. We are working with MAST DOT to better understand how the striping will work at the end of the construction, taking into account the observations that have been shared with, with us by members of the public. So it's an issue under consideration. Thank you for your feedback. In our conversations with MAST DOT, we are raising the questions around how the striping will work, taking into account comments from the public. PFAS filtration project, we're dealing with issues that are germane to beginning a major construction project where the contractor is asking for an extension of the construction schedule, and similarly, they've identified a couple issues that may recall us to execute a change order before we commence the excavation. MWRA connection through South Borough, we recently hired Carrie Reed as the DPW director. Similarly, South Borough just brought on board their new DPW director, and we are now asked, working on scheduling our next meetings to keep this project moving forward. And then fourthly, an idea that I'm putting forth to the board, we have had a very successful effort in building up the financing for affordable housing through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The balance currently stands at over $4 million. You may recall back in 2010, the town found it appropriate to set up a trust fund, and their purpose was specifically to deal with financing for affordable housing projects. And given the balances that we're looking at, that is working very well. What has been missing is a mechanism that allows the town to create the projects to be funded. And therefore, I'm offering that the board instruct town staff to present a proposal on moving forward and identifying an entity or an instrument that will be responsible for creating the affordable housing projects. And here's what that entity could do specifically. One, create an affordable housing production plan. Two, ensure that parcels that the town already bought for affordable housing remain available for that purpose and are not redirected for other purposes in town. Thirdly, ensure that the agenda moving forward affordable housing is done alongside towns, homes for economic development, inclusion, social justice, equity, sustainability. I've had a great deal of discussions with many stakeholders in town about having the town lead, continue to lead on building structures that are environmentally green. And then also, we, we can't move forward the discussion on affordable housing without strong advocacy. This group will certainly be tasked with building the advocacy agenda to move forward affordable housing. And then, over the years, it's been pretty clear from comments received by the, by different town boards, that the community wants housing that is consistent with the history and the character of our existing neighborhoods. And so this committee will also be charged in making sure that the projects that move forward meet that goal. And then, of interest is also, and this may be similar to what was being discussed regarding the, the Trails Committee, we want this committee to coordinate its efforts with all other town committees that deal with housing. For example, they, they should be asked to meet at least quarterly with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They should be asked to hold similar meetings with the planning board as well as the Select Board. And then, last but not least, we are, we've been big on, on accountability. This entity should be asked to report to the community, whether through Select Board meetings, on a very regular basis. So those are some of the examples of what this, this entity could look, could work on. What would it look like? There are two options. We can go with a traditional affordable housing committee. However, I'm getting more excited about perhaps looking into creating a nonprofit entity in town that will do this work. And so what, what you may get from staff is a recommendation that will offer two opportunities, create a traditional affordable housing committee, or, in the alternative, create a housing corporation. I, I go back to the statement that Shadul shared earlier. We can't keep doing the same thing. We've had affordable housing committees over the past, and being entrepreneurial, it feels like every time we try and do that, we're trying to fit something into a square peg that is not designed for that. And so I think creatively, I'm leaning more towards recommending a housing corporation. It's a nonprofit. What would it look like? We don't have an idea yet, but this is a project that we are excited and would like to work on.
I am super excited about that, Mr. Kamala, and I really appreciate the, the initiative and forward thinking. So first, I just wanted to make sure, I touched base with an email that we got from our planner, John Gelsic, who lets us know, while these numbers are preliminary, they're not official, the 2020 census numbers appears that we've, shows that we've added 1,500 new housing units between 2010 and 2020, for a total of 6,645 housing units as of 2020. This puts our current share of affordable. This puts our current share of affordable housing at 10.91%, which is down from where it was at 14.12%. So let's see. If our affordable housing stock were to remain the same, we would need to add 600 new units, just 600 new units approximately, to drop below that 10% threshold, which, as we know, is a bit protective of the town steering its own ship and making its own decisions and, you know, hoping to build the housing that they want to, you know, we want to build collectively, not me, but we collectively. So let me, I just want to make sure I put that into the record because John had sent that to us, or me, yesterday. I think I sent it around. And I think that we are very committed, as a board, to affordable housing and to options. And I'm personally pretty excited about you thinking outside of the box and trying to really think about the ways that this could work for us. I want to make sure that whatever we do, we're mindful of, we're mindful of making sure we keep options open for developers and not sort of having, necessarily having developers in that committee structure so that they have options wide open to them. There's no conflict of interest. But that would be my first quick thoughts. Shadul, how about you?
Yeah, no, along the same lines. Thank you for thinking out of the box, and I'm super excited about the new idea, especially the nonprofit. I think there are a lot of challenges that can be, or technical challenges, that can be overcome by having a different entity focused on this and utilizing it as an entity, maybe building something under this. And a lot of potential you must have thought through, and we can work together to think through. And I think we want to, again, on the caution side, be cognitive of, you know, the challenges of two similar committees. So we want to have that structure, the goals, the missions, and the communication and everything together. And having a nonprofit would actually give it a completely different flavor. So I like that better in some ways. But thank you. This is great. Look forward to more farming on this.
I love the idea. I think it's great. But as you were describing it, my head went off into another direction, which is like, what is one of the bigger issues for somebody who is renting? And how can they ever get into an affordable unit? Traditional financing always says, okay, you need to have your 20%. So maybe down something to, if we were to look at something like down payment assistance. I know for a fact that there are programs already out there for down payment assistance, but maybe having that kind of, kind of, having that coordination with a nonprofit could be, could be very helpful. Because I know like to qualify, you have to be, you know, there are specific criteria in order to qualify for the down payment assistance. And then, on top of that, we also have issues of the market volatility and the financial markets where interest rates right now have shot up and made Hockington even less affordable because not only are interest rates going up, but so are prices. So some type of financial tool where we could have, you know, less than market rates and interest. So some kind of lending system, just something to think about as part of the whole, the whole process.
Good, good point. In fact, it's on our list, down payment assistance loans for first-time moderate-income home buyers, and also providing one-time grants to Hockington residents experiencing emergency housing crisis.
Yeah.
Could be related to rent.
To the Chair, also to consider our first responders, misfire and veterans. How can we provide some, you know, some kind of tool to make them, make it available to them in a priority order, too? I know there are certain rules that, on the affordable housing side, we talked about it, I think, in Planning Board, too, that may not be as easy to formulate, but through the nonprofit. And just because we think that is, you know, I personally think that is one target group rightfully we want to help for, you know, a lot of good reasons, including, you know, we want proximity of our police fire to our town. So something to think about, how can we formulate that as well into, making into this?
Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Well, as I said, Sunday morning, I was privileged to have breakfast with a couple of seniors, and then there were some people stopped by the table, and they're really interested. I mean, one of them said that they'd downsize in town to save money, but the taxes have gone up every year to the point of, they're not now. And so they're upset about that. And then another woman said she would give anything to have an apartment here in Hockington, to get a nice, decent apartment, and she just can't. There's nothing that she can really afford out there. And others have said that they wanted, one of the others said their problem was when they apply for housing in town, they don't always get it because now it's all state-owned and state-operated. It used to be where people from Hockington got a preference.
The town's really state-run, but yes.
Yeah, but it used to be state-run, but now the law is very different. So if there's a unit open in Lowell and you don't take it, you go back to the bottom of the list. And these people said, why can't we have some of our own housing? Why can't the town build a few apartments for seniors and do it in the same kind of way? Well, it's very expensive, you know? And that sort of thing. That was the kind of, the way the conversation went Sunday morning, and I understand it, you know? And we do have to find a way to make a decent apartment affordable to these people who want to keep them in town. And we do want to keep them in town. They built the town.
Yeah, I was going to say, I do find it, I trust the Town Manager, the judge on this, but I do find it confusing to have the two separate affordable housing committees working on the Housing Party, which is separate. And I think a lot of people that value the Affordable Housing Trust Fund really want to do work more towards the building thing and the housing. So I guess just keep that in mind. I don't know, the trust fund part of it could be moved to a different committee rather than each of committees? I don't know, I'm just a little bit curious about that, about separating the two committees.
Potentially even the Commissioners of Trust Funds? Because already, because I sort of see that as, the way that, I agree with you, Amy, I think that that's how people get onto that committee. And the way that you outlined it for us, Mr. Kamala, is really that there's a little bit of a checks and balance in there they would be reviewing, proposals and stuff, which I really like as well. So I think that that's a really thoughtful comment, Amy, to be honest with you. I had the same, I had the same first thought when I contemplated the two committees.
To the Chair, I just want to emphasize great, great work on thinking out of the box. And now I think you have more work. Keep it up, taking all this feedback. Kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're all very committed to that idea. So make sure you let us know individually or as a group how we can make a contribution and help.
I have a question about the Main Street Corridor before we go on to the next topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, just at the last meeting, I think Mr. Kamala told us that when the land project is substantially completed in October, the road will not need to be dug up again. The sidewalks won't need to be dug up again, but they will kind of do the transformers and the mire. But then I have a question for a resident. What about the lawns? Will the lawns have to be dug up again when we get the transformers in?
It depends on where the service lines connect. If the work has already been done on the residency yard, that may not be necessary. But again, all of this will depend on the details regarding how the services are connected.
Just a resident who would be affected are concerned.
Yes, and I think if I remember correctly, I did work on the easements. The town will be responsible for any disturbance caused through any property.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Is that all you needed from us, Mr. Kamala?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Lake Maspinok.
Yes, there's one more. I'm seeking the Board's authorization to work with Town Council to execute the license that we may need for the repair work at the Lake Maspinok Dam wall. Blazing being that we have begun the special act process. That process, as you know, takes a long time. We are hoping to begin at least the bulk of the repair work this coming fall. And one way we can get to that point is for the Board to authorize the Town Manager to sign a license agreement with the parties involved.
So I would entertain that motion.
So move.
If we can have discussion?
Oh, yeah, we'll have discussion.
So full motion, I move to authorize the Town Manager to execute a construction access license with the town of Milford to access a certain parcel of land off of Pine Island Road in the town of Milford.
Second? Okay, now discussion. I'm sorry, I kind of raced through that. Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, so we have, the town has the Lake Maspinok Dam Advisory Committee that's listed on the town website. I just want to make sure that they're being communicated with and discussed about these sort of issues and if they agree to it as well. And then, and if we don't meet that anymore at a future meeting, we could disband them maybe, if necessary? A bunch of them, it's like, one, two, three, four, five of them, their term has expired according to town website in April of 2023. So I just want, if they still exist, I want to make sure we're communicating with them or if they not meet anymore that we take the appropriate action.
Good point. In fact, there's a larger exercise, I'm sure we will be coming back to the Board, identifying committees that may need to be retired.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, by roll call vote?
Chadman, yes?
Mary Jo, Franier, yes?
The finest rule, yes?
Amy?
Amy, yes.
Muriel Kramer, yes. Okay, now I have a question for the Board. The hour is 9:03. We have a discussion on goals still to come, as well as our liaison reports. Is it the pleasure of the Board that we potentially have another meeting to speak about the goals in August?
I don't check that. That'd be my call.
All right, Amy?
It's only seven o'clock here. But I agree, we had a long meeting, so if we need to postpone this, I think that's okay. I guess there is a break at the time.
Yeah, it's hard. I celebrate trying to have, not have as many meetings, but it's very hard to do. So can I ask first if people have availability on the 15th, Town Staff and Select Board members?
15th of August.
August.
I'm not sure I'm going to be here, but I can probably zoom in.
Or the 22nd?
22nd is probably better for me.
Yeah.
I can't do the 15th, we'll be driving back from Dr. Mydell.
Okay. Does the 22nd work for you, Amy?
The 22nd would be better for me.
Yeah, but you are fine for me.
15th would be better for me. If we have to do it on the 22nd, I'll have to zoom in.
Okay, how about Town Staff?
In fact, Shadul, both days, we have ESBC two meetings, and we're getting to that point where our attendance is.
Is more important because there are redesign decisions.
Yes.
So we can reconcile it with the ESBC voting days, especially. I think there is, 22nd might be the voting day because the 28th is the voting day. That's the only concern.
So the 15th might work better.
15th, yeah, I'm open for both days today. 15th might work better from that.
So Amy, you can't meet on the 15th because you're driving.
Well, we'll be driving back from Lina, so I guess I could potentially drive from the car.
I have zoomed from the car before. It is a bit of an imposition on the family.
I've zoomed from over.
Is another night that week, 14, 15, 16, 17, better for people?
16 is wide open for me. 17 is wide open for me.
I don't think I'm going to be around that week.
You're going to be gone that week.
I have something I believe that we're going to be gone the first two days.
Okay, all right. So just in terms of timing for, so you always meet on the Tuesdays?
ESBC, yes.
ESBC. What about the, what about the following week, not Tuesday? 21, 23, 24?
I can do, I can do 23, 24, or 21. I could do it any of those days.
I'll have to zoom in.
You'd have to zoom in.
That's fine.
You're fine doing that? And you're around?
I'm fine, yeah.
I think I can do it.
All right, so is a Monday or a Wednesday better?
Wednesday for me.
Yeah, probably Wednesday.
All right, let's go. Is Wednesday okay with Town Staff? And Amy? Wednesday, the 23rd?
23rd, that's fine.
All right.
Elaine, you may have ZBA?
It's okay. All right, so we'll be meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd, starting at 6:00 p.m. The first item of business will be the goals discussion. And then, also, I noticed that we keep, we keep the old list of future Board agenda items. I really need the new ones stuck in there. And then we should talk about those that night as well because those keep falling off the bottom of the list. So we'll take those as number one and number two. Okay, so we are at, thank you, everybody, for your flexibility, by the way. Everybody, everybody. We are at Liaison Reports or Board Invites. Do you want to go first, Shadul?
What is that?
Liaison Reports.
Sure, yeah. So we had a good ESBC meeting last week, I believe, and a big part of it was discussing that MSBA has come up with new advisory. I think it's Advisory 81, and that will actually open up more reimbursement for us to the point 2% to 4% more. So that would total to current 44% reimbursement to, will bump up to about, it's a funny number, 48.625, 49.625%.
When you're talking about those big numbers, though, man, it helps.
And they don't want to round up, so that's fine. So that is the number. But eventually, I think with all the other exceptions going out, we are looking at about 30% reimbursement, which is pretty, pretty good from where we started. So that is going to save, you know, easily a couple million, I'm hoping. Didn't do the math, but good amount, hopefully. So that was a big part. And second part was the augmented, for the traffic proposal, traffic situation, the handling of the traffic situation, where with the traffic design, and it looks even more impressive, and also taking into account the bus routes and whatnot. So it's moving, I think, pretty good and looking, looking good from those aspects. Then on the second update I have is for the Health, Board of Health and the Health Services, there was a strategic planning session with, what was the name?
Consultants from MAPC.
Right, there was a state one and then Collins Group.
Yes, it's a combined effort by the Collins Center and MAPC.
Oh, thank you, okay. So that was a kickoff. They outlined what they're going to do. They're going to gather information in the next few weeks, and then there will be a larger session to do the strategic plan, which wasn't done for a while. So I'm excited that we are moving forward and doing this. It's also a state requirement, so that'll help us. And is there another one? And there's a Conservation Committee meeting coming up. Just a quick update on the library. There was a directive from the Library Director, which I thought was very encouraging, and I can read through that. I kept a copy because it was, oh, my glasses. Essentially, there was a directive for one book, one Hockington Initiative, Fall Initiative, which would encourage, you know, further focus on building community sense of unity towards reading the book and. towards reading the book and building up more diversity. And she actually mentioned that the public library's recent long-range plan and tying it in with the Select Board's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging that this idea formed towards it. So kudos to them and comment all the efforts that they're doing on this. It's going to run from September 15 to November 17, and the title will be chosen shortly. What shall I have? Thank you.
If I may.
Yeah.
Shadul, ESBC two, August 3, this coming Thursday, the Chair of ESBC two will appear before the school committee, and his presentation will focus on some of the locations that were ruled out during the site selection, and I thought that might be of interest to Select Board members.
Thank you, that's a really important point.
Also, August is the big month when we'll get the final numbers.
Correct.
What's the date on that?
I think August 28 is ringing on my head, but I'll have to. I think for Select Board, it's August 28. I can, Norman and I can find out.
Exactly, yeah, we'll send an estimate.
Yeah, it's not, we don't have a meeting on the 28th for it. Right? We don't have a meeting on the books for the 28th.
Oh, so it would be probably the ESBC's meeting. When is our next meeting?
Yeah, in fact, yeah, I found the date. The ESBC two will consider the estimates, the project estimates, on August 15, 1/5.
1/5.
Yeah.
And when is it coming to Select Board?
I believe it's 28, isn't it?
Yeah, no, we just decided one, but our regular schedule was when?
So our regular scheduled meeting after the one that we just set is September 5.
So I'm thinking it could be that one.
Any other questions for Shadul? Okay, or finally?
I don't have any.
And Mary Jo. Nope. Amy?
For these all bits, let's see, so, let's see, I wanted to note to the public that the Main Street time lapse videos are available on the Main Street construction site. If you want to see how the product has changed over the last two and a half years, there's quick short minute videos that are time lapse, it's a really cool feature. And then I want to mention, we just found out today by the Boston Tea Party Museum about somebody, a resident of Hopkinton who was involved in the Boston Tea Party, and they would like to come place a historical marker on the grave and on the great cemetery. So that's something that we're going to start, which is, is excited about. And then we also got an email this week about two Eagle Scouts, and it sounds like Shadul was able to attend that one, but we should also invite them here to our current fall weekend.
Yeah, that would be lovely.
Yeah, that would be on the 12th, Saturday, 10:30, Court of Honor, and they're honoring Bharat Malaka and even Liu for achieving the Eagle Award.
That's awesome.
Anything else, Amy?
That's it for me.
Okay, so, yes, so I wanted to mention the Eagle Scout ceremony as well, thank you. I'm also going to advocacy day at the Y tomorrow, so pray for me and pray for anybody who's anywhere near the archery when I'm having my go at it. I'm excited about it. Also, the, I also wanted to, I wanted to recognize an outgoing, outgoing student from the Sustainable Green Committee, Brendan McAlwin. We got, we got an email with some work product that they shared with us that he had figured, you know, had calculated the process for calculating the amount of carbon sequestered in Hopkinton's forests and our greenhouse gas, and our greenhouse gas inventory, which I thought was really incredibly useful, incredibly inspiring from a young person and a real, a real advantage to the town from a young person working with the committee. So really appreciate him and congratulations to him, and I'm sure wherever he's going to college in the fall, he's going through great things.
A lot of luck in the world.
Yeah, so let's see, so the Veterans Celebration Committee, there's no update there. I am going to plan to go to the school committee this week, although I have been watching them, they are doing, doing great work as always. I'm also going to touch base with the Board of Appeals, the gentleman who came before us at our last meeting and this meeting. The property in question does have a special permit, and, and I don't think the homeowner there has come into complete compliance, so I would like to touch base with Mr. Shepherd. I tried to do it on Friday, but he wasn't in, and see if there's a way that this community can help that homeowner come into the compliance that he needs to come into so we can be supportive of the process and the intent of the special permit and process and just find a way to move forward peacefully.
Which one was that?
The property on Winter Street with the buildings that are too close to the edge. I've been by a couple of times and it is, it is pretty hazardous.
It's right on the edge.
It is pretty hazardous. So if they were to pull them back, I could even conceive that people could pull over in the spot that is vacated and make it a little bit safer. I'll tell you honestly, when I've gone by a couple of times, I have not pulled over anywhere because there isn't anywhere to pull over, right? It's just, so at any rate, I want to do what we can as a community of, you know, neighbors to find a way to help that homeowner come into compliance, satisfy the special permit, move forward. And then.
Just on that, is that something we would be doing or the Planning Board?
So I'm just going to, I'm taking on myself to check in with Mr. Shepherd, who's been working with that homeowner, to find out if he would welcome help. I mean, because we can't just barge on in there, but if that individual would welcome help to come into compliance and get himself situated. I know that we have a community of volunteers, I don't know who it would be, I know we have people who would be willing to help out. And I think that is all I had, so it's our favorite motion of the night.
I move, Rafana, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
By roll call vote, Shadul.
Shadul Manan, yes.
Mary Jo LaFrenney, yes.
Rafana Suriel, yes.
Amy?
Amy, your turn.
Your turn, Kramer, yes. Thank you all. Thank you, H.K.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Have fun. Thanks for being here.